Make a motion to come out of executive session, please.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to come out of executive session.
I have a motion, and Mr. Brady, your microphone is not working real well. Okay, maybe it is. I have a motion, I need a second.
I'll say it.
I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? We're now back in session.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is certification, this is closed session pursuant to subsection 2.2, 3712D of the Code of Virginia, 1950. As amended, each member of the Board of Supervisors of our own court certifies to that, to the best of their knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and only public business matters that were identified in the motions by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in a meeting by the Board of Supervisors. Any member of the Board of Supervisors who believes that there was a departure from their requirements shall stay so prior to the vote indicating the substance of the departure that in his or her judgment has taken place. Are there any supervisors who believe that a departure took place? Seeing that, if you agree that the matters heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting were pursuant only to the motions by which the closed meeting was convened, please signify by saying yes. Kim Lovelace.
Yes.
Carl Ray.
Yes.
Steve Brady.
Yes.
David Eaton.
Yes.
Rebecca Dyne.
Yes.
Oris Christian.
Yes.
Luann Wallace.
Yes.
Ma'am, you have approval to return to regular session.
Thank you, Mr. Lester. So at this time, we're going to have an invocation. Please stand and stay standing for the Legislegions.
Father God, Lord, we love you, we thank you, and we praise you today, Father. Father, forgive us for where we fail you each and every day, and thank you for allowing us to be a part of our local government, Father. Help us be more like you in each and every way. In your name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the best of liberty and justice brought on.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to ask for approval of the agenda, and I think we have some amendments, please.
Madam Chair, thank you. Yes, I have three requests for amendments to the agenda. First is the removal of the PSA presentations under the presentation section. The second one is under the county attorney section, line number two, an AEP resolution for reduction in utility rates, and a one under the county administrator, that is line number nine, a travel request addition.
Okay, I'll accept a motion for the agenda, the amended agenda, please.
Motion to approve the amended agenda, Madam Chair.
I'll say it.
Thank you, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion further? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. So at this time, I'm going to open the floor for a public hearing, which is the resolution and ordinance prohibiting the location and operation of an abortion clinic or abortion clinics within the boundaries of Russell County, Virginia. And I do have a list of folks that have asked to speak. And so, according to my chair prerogative, I'm going to do it this way. I'm going to hear the folks that want to speak on something other than the ordinance first. And so, if they would like to stay after they speak publicly, that's fine, but I'm going to let them be able to move along. I also have people on this list that are from other counties. So I'm going to ask you if you will be patient with us and allow our county citizens to speak publicly first. So I'm going to shuffle folks around from where you are. All right, so I'm going to start out tonight with number one, Eric Bryant, Beagle's Nest Branch. He wants to speak on the state of the county. Eric?
I'm glad to have this opportunity to address the board, the citizens of Russell County this evening, and I've risen to speak about a very weighty subject that's dragging our county down, and that is the systemic failure of county governance. I've stood before this board on multiple occasions, and I've made many phone calls, sent many emails to this board and other county agencies. However, over the course of more than two years, all my efforts have been rebuffed by this board. The animal warden did nothing and stopped taking my calls. I was told by sheriff's deputy point blank, "I'm not coming out there over my concerns with neighborhood gunfire." This complete lack of action and continued lawlessness culminated in an event in January this year that happened a couple of hundred yards from my doorstep, where a little boy had to endure horrible abuse in below freezing temperatures, which has cost him his legs. Code of Virginia, Title 24-2, Chapter 2, states, "A bold petition of a circuit court may remove from office any elected officer or officer who has been appointed to fulfill an elective office residing within the jurisdiction of the court." One, for neglect of duty, misuse of office, or incompetence in the performance of duties, or the neglect of duty, misuse of office, or incompetence in the performance of duties, has a material adverse effect upon the conduct of the office. The petition must be signed by a number of registered voters who reside within the jurisdiction of the officer equal to 10% of the total number of votes passed at the last election for the office that the officer holds. I am formally calling for the resignation of all seven board members. Then, after a reasonable amount of time, if the call is ignored by all the members, then it is my intention to begin petition for recall. Title 24 for petition of removal cites neglect of duty and incompetence as reasons for removal if they have any adverse material effect upon the conduct of the office. And to that, I would state that the neglect of duty and incompetence has resulted in bringing shame upon this board, and the loss of trustworthiness from its citizens, and any potential business that would locate here. That is an adverse material fact on this board as a whole and individually, and also, it is an adverse material fact on the citizens of Russell County, and has been a tragedy for a young boy. Our declaration says, "To secure our rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, governments are instituted among men deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed, that whenever any form of government becomes destructive of these ends, it is the right of the people to author or abolish it, and to institute new government, having its foundations on such principles, and organizing its powers in such form as to them seem most likely to affect their safety and happiness." And it goes on to say, "It is their right, it is their duty, to throw off such government, and to provide new guards for their future security." Thank you for your time. If anyone would be interested in helping me with this, please say yes.
Good man. Thank you, Mr. Bryant.
No, I'm not following you.
Okay. You can't follow that one, huh? All right, next, hang on just a second. Roy Castle.
Thank you for this privilege to speak. On November the 7th, I spoke here, it was my 95th birthday. I appreciate you letting me speak. I requested that someone look at the King Lynn Heights subdivision circle, which involves a half a mile of paved road. Well, I thought maybe around July, somebody would take a look at it, but in three days, Luann had it all fixed. Water company cut that road into six places, and when she got through, it would just drive over to a spoon, it's going over this carpet, and I want to thank the Lord, I want to thank Luann for taking that into consideration. I thank this Board of Supervisors, anything they do, anyway I could help you people, I thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Joni Baker, Lebanon, Virginia. Give me your address, please, when you approach the bench, please.
My name is Joni Baker. I reside and lay my head down to sleep here in Lebanon, Steve Brady's district. I'd like to thank each of you for listening to the citizens and making Russell County a pro-life sanctuary county. Tonight, I stand before you as an off-duty law enforcement officer. As I spoke to each of you last year concerning an unconstitutional noise ordinance, which would have put an unnecessary stress on both the sheriff's office and first responders by creating a higher call volume of domestic disturbance and altercation between the neighbors, although it's my strong opinion that the noise ordinance would be bad for both the citizens and first responders, this ordinance is best for both the public and first responders of this great county. Here are some statistics. National Abortion Federation releases 2021 violence and disruption, said, "For immediate release May 19, 2022, the report shows biggest increases in stalking, armed threats, invasions, and assault and battery." They said, "Today, the National Abortion Federation, NAF, released its 2021 statistics on violence and disruption against abortion providers. The statistics show a significant increase in stalking by 600%, block aids 450%, hoax devices suspicious packages 163%, invasions 129%, and assault and battery 128%." The NAF has been compiling statistics on incidents of violence and disruption against abortion providers for 45 years. Since 1977, there have been 11 murders, 42 bombings, 196 arsonists, 491 assaults, and thousands of incidents of criminal activities directed at patients, providers, and volunteers. As a husband, a father, a citizen, and Lord willing, future sheriff of this great county, I strongly encourage each of you to pass this ordinance, which will ultimately save taxpayers' money and save lives. In closing, Russell County is known as the heart of southwest Virginia, not as a place where hearts go to stop beating, and let's keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Luann, were you going into the public comment now?
The abortion.
The abortion, pardon. Because I want to talk about something else before we get into that.
Uh, are you?
I didn't sign through, I wasn't sure if that was all just for the public comments about the abortion ordinance.
If you have something else, I'll allow you to come up.
Thanks.
Give me your name and address.
Juan Burke, 64 Park Avenue, Lebanon. One of the things I wanted to bring to you tonight, and I know Wonzo had gotten a letter, we had talked about the opioid money that came back into the county, and I know I have somebody that had sent him a letter asking and requesting a donation, I guess basically you'd say, from Russell County to the Mended Women's Home in Abingdon. I really hope that y'all look at this and that there's something that y'all can do. There's quite a few women from Russell County that end up over in the jail system also, and it's because of substance abuse. So we're just asking that, as you look at what you do with this funding, that you could possibly do something for the Mended Women's Home in Abingdon, because I think it would be an awesome benefit for them, because we have just as many women that will go through that program as the other counties. The other thing is, we talked to you three years ago about Mark Marrow. We have Mark Marrow coming back to our schools in September. He is going to the middle schools this time. We had some donations that came from the board last time, of course, we'll look for any donations that we can, but he's going to go into all the middle schools within Russell County, and we're also going to do a community night again up at the Lebanon Middle School. So we would appreciate any support that y'all give us for that, because he made quite an impact on the kids in these schools, and we know the same thing will happen this time. So we're just looking to you some first, and anyway, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I have James Nunley.
James Nunley, 100 Grunkley Circle, Lebanon. Here tonight just to first share my great support for this ordinance that's being presented. We're talking about protecting the sanctity of life. Jeremiah, Chapter 1, verse 5, God tells us that, "Tell, John, tell Jeremiah, 'Before I formed thee in the belly I knew thee.'" That tells me that, that's enough for me to believe, life begins at conception. And with that, we definitely don't want this industry finding its way into the borders of our county. I'm a strong supporter of passing this ordinance tonight, and I appreciate how the ordinance is written. I would greatly appreciate your time, your consideration on this. Keep working. I appreciate what you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nunley. Tara Knoll.
My name is Tara Knoll, 68 Angel Way, Cleveland. Thank you all for giving us a few minutes of your time to hear from the community. I stand before you guys once again with the same story that I shared in October, but I want to take a moment to share that again, and as to the reason that I choose life. So 18 years ago, God blessed my husband and myself with a beautiful son, Josh. He was born with a neural tube defect called spina bifida. At that time, every doctor that we had met with encouraged abortion for those with this diagnosis, especially early on in pregnancy, because they see zero quality of life. We later found that information out after Josh was born, but at that time, we listened, and we truly processed what they had to share, and after all of that, even if I would have had all of that information during my pregnancy, I asked myself, "Did I give the peacock its feathers? Did I breathe the breath of life into man?" I didn't. I'm not God. God chose life for him, so I chose life for him. Josh unfortunately passed away 11 years ago, but I'm glad that God blessed us and many that are here with us this evening with his beautiful soul for almost seven years. And as Pastor Nunley just shared, Jeremiah 1:5 says, "Before I formed thee in the belly, I knew thee; and before thou camest toward that of the womb, I sanctified thee, and ordained thee a prophet unto the nations." He set us apart, and He declared us holy. Our God knows us, and He has a perfect plan for each of us. He is perfect in everything that He does, and He makes zero mistakes. We all need to protect all life from the point of conception moving forward, and I ask that you please make a stand for our county and make Russell County a pro-life sanctuary. Be a voice, allow us to be a voice for these precious souls. Give them that sanctified, wholly set-apart life a chance to make a difference in this world. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry. What's it say?
Randy Hurley.
Thank you for addressing this matter publicly. My name is Randy Hurley, and I live at 353 Arrowhead Circle, Cedar Bluff, and I'm not afraid to share my address, I'd like certain candidates. As a DSS worker, I dealt with multi-generational sexual abuse that resulted in many unsafe pregnancies. I worked with a child that told me-
And threw any children in the room?
I would highly recommend to get a house. What was I saying? I worked with a child that told me his grandfather taught him how to rape animals. I dealt with children who could diagram the exact size of their father's penises. I dealt with a 14-year-old child who was convinced to keep her baby by a foster parent that would eventually try to take that baby that she nearly broke her body to give life to. I question how the people of this county could know these scenarios exist and continue to speak out against safe abortion, because abortion will never be denied in Russell County. Is it because the people in this county believe abortion was actually coming to Russell County? No, because we know that we don't have the population to sustain an abortion clinic. We already knew this. Nobody said they were coming to Russell County to open an abortion clinic. We don't even have an OB-GYN. Is it because the people of this county care for children? No, because I know that's not the case. I drove hundreds of children out of the Russell County borders into other counties, and sometimes into other states, because nobody in this county would offer shelter to those children. Is it because the people of Russell County are unaware of the horrific child abuse that is constant in our county? No, because we all saw that last week with a child who suffered severe frostbite. And we know that sexual abuse is rampant in our county, and that we need additional services to deal with those poor children who have been sexually abused. Is it because people are uninformed? I don't think it's that either. All of these people have access to the internet, they can talk to their doctors, they can ask other people for their opinions, and they can form their own choices. Is it because people in this room have never met somebody who needed a safe abortion? No, because the last time we spoke about abortion in this county, we heard from a Republican woman who is still here today because she was able to get a safe abortion when she chose abortion. So what is it? We're all here for a failed culture war. We have a lot of people in this room that don't like the way the country is heading. Russell County is just a county. It is not part of the national stage, and it is not part of the safe politics. However, we have a lot of armchair quarterbacks in the room who want to enact change but are unwilling to go to the state or national governments that will allow that to happen. I am not here to beg this board to stop this ordinance. It will face a challenge at some point in the future, and it will fail. We've all seen how much this county cares about those ordinances anyway, because candidates have been able to put up signs in violation of ordinances since last December. I'm here to tell women that they can still have an abortion in Russell County. There are multiple online providers who can ship the appropriate medication to your doorstep up to the 10th week. You can still go to Bristol. I'm here to tell any child in Russell County under the age of 18, that if they choose an abortion and their parent will not consent, I will personally help them with the judicial bypass of that process as a free licensed attorney in this state of Virginia. Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to ask you to keep your opinions to yourself. This is a free room to express whatever we need to express at this time, whether you agree with it or not. I appreciate that. Thank you. Next, I have on the list is Dr. Don Zambongian. I murder that every time. Dr. Don.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to address each one of you again. First thing I want to say is, I want to thank the county attorney for the documents that she drafted. What a great job. We began this meeting tonight as we begin every meeting this government's having. We stood, and we heard a word of prayer unto God, who rules over all. The Bible says, "Jesus said, 'I am the way, and the truth, and the life.'" Jesus is the creator of life, He is the sustainer of life, He is the giver of life. And the Bible says, "Thine eyes did see my substance, yet being unperfect; and in thy book all my members were written, which in continuance were fashioned, but as yet there was none of them. How precious also are thy thoughts unto me, O God, how great is the sum of them." God is the giver of life, God is the creator of life, He is the sustainer of life, and it does not matter what human governments and human people think. What we need to be doing, if we're going to open these meetings in prayer, we need to be living according to the word of God, and standing up where God said. And I just encourage this board, you've come this far, have the courage to do what's right. These are the days when God's people must stand up and be accounted for, and that's all I've got to say. Thank you for your time.
I'm now down to some Washington County folks, and I appreciate you coming, I really do. So I've got Bobby Gross, and I'm not real sure you gave me no address.
I have that, too.
All right. I'll mark you all fully as then. Chris Hess, Bristol, Virginia.
My name is Father Chris Hess, I live in Bristol, Virginia. I am pastor of three churches in this great part of the state, and I also represent Catholic Diocese of Richmond as the dean of Russell County and surrounding counties. And I came here to speak in support of this ordinance, something that I think needs to happen. It's an issue that has stirred a little bit of controversy in Bristol and even in Washington County, but I don't see that being the case here. This should be very simple, this should be the simplest decision you will ever make. Why? Because we're not asking you to change anything in Russell County. We're asking you to let Russell County be the way it is right now. When this ordinance passes, it goes into effect, Russell County will be the same that day as it was the day before, and it will continue like that. Let me tell you what's going on in Bristol right now. Our city government is betting on Hard Rock Hotel and Casino to bring thousands of tourists to our city every week. Right now, the tourists that are coming to the temporary casino are being treated to quite the show. Directly across the street where we have the clinic, we have their volunteers who call themselves escorts, dressed in pink, dancing provocatively in the parking lot, shouting obscenities, throwing religious articles into the street ahead of oncoming traffic as their way of giving the finger to Christianity, while another group only a few feet away perched on the top of stepladders with bullhorns yelling at the escorts. It's quite the sight. There have been multiple arrests while this has been going on. Do you want that in Russell County? I would hope not. The abortion industry is targeting southwest Virginia, Russell County, and other places because this is such an easy access to other states. If they come here, what they're going to do is set up a base of operations to market in other states. I just heard someone say that Russell County cannot support, will not sustain a clinic. I don't dispute that. That's not what they want. They're not here for Russell County. They're here to bring people in from out of state who don't care what kind of controversy and conflict they create in this county. You don't believe me? In Bristol, we are routinely seeing vehicles from more than half a dozen states coming into that clinic. It's just crazy what's going on right there. The clinic in Bristol is owned by a woman named Diane Durces. She's not a native, she has no concern for southwest Virginia. If the name sounds familiar, it's because she owned the clinic in Jackson, Mississippi that was at the center of the Supreme Court decision, basically that overturned Roe v. Wade. She's had to close multiple clinics since then, and she's now advertising to the people in those areas that they should come to Bristol. Even though it's by far not the closest clinic to those areas, what is the closest clinic that she owns? Proving once again that she's not in this for the women, she's in this for the money. And that's it. I also just heard somebody say, "Well, Russell County is not in the national or international spotlight scene right now." And my question is, do you want to be? Because that's what this will do. In Bristol, I have been speaking to journalists from one end of this country to the other. We had a journalist from Sweden at my church, we had a TV crew from New Zealand. That's the kind of attention that this is bringing. I've said a lot of crazy things in a short time, so they just close wherever they can. Russell County really is a beautiful place to grow up and raise a family. All we're asking is that you just please allow Russell County to remain as it is now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Father Hess. Dr. Jacqueline Hurley.
Hello.
Thank you, Father Hess. Dr. Jacqueline Early.
Hello, my name is Dr. Jacqueline Early. I live at 15421 Bryan Lane in Washington County. I am a board-certified emergency physician, and I have taken care of many residents of Russell County while I worked at JMH in Abingdon. As an emergency physician, I have treated many OB-GYN emergencies. None of them required me to murder a child to save a mother. This is a lie that has spread in this country by those who make money performing elective abortions and by people who have no knowledge of actual emergency medical care but believe everything they read or hear in the media. When a patient has life-threatening bleeding during pregnancy, she comes to the ER. The baby's life is naturally in danger if the mom is bleeding in her uterus. We stop the bleeding, transfuse blood, we don't kill the child. If a baby dies naturally during a miscarriage and the mom is not able to expel the contents of the uterus, a physician will perform a DNC and a reblation. Our goal is to always save the mom and baby, and we don't kill either one. When a mom has an ectopic or tubal pregnancy, this is not a viable pregnancy, and it will die naturally 100% of the time and often kill the mother. Terminating a tubal pregnancy is not an abortion. A baby will never grow to full term in a fallopian tube. These women with real-life-threatening OB-GYN emergencies are not being denied health care. They seek it at the hospital or the ER, and anyone that tells you that women die waiting for abortions is lying to you. That doesn't even make sense. No one is dying because they can't get to an abortion center fast enough. Women who want to end the lives of their healthy, growing babies in their womb, seek elective abortions. Abortion businesses make money for killing the healthy children. I encourage you to check the prices of the abortion center and ask yourself, "Why it costs more to kill a fourteen-week baby than a six-week baby? Could it be that the baby is bigger because it is alive and growing for an additional eight weeks in its mother's womb?" Abortion businesses kill healthy, growing babies. They are very profitable. I am not going to argue whether women want them for convenience or because they have a tragic experience when they conceive, or even whether some states legalize them. I am talking about a procedure that is not medically necessary for the health of the mother, a procedure which is successful if it kills a child and leaves her in the trash of the abortion business. Is the goal of this county to bring in abortion tourism or recreational tourism, like kayaking on the Clinch River or hiking the trails? Because of the laws in neighboring states, I encourage you to spend some time with the Bristol clinic to see what you would be welcoming in your community. Despite lawyers scaring you and lying that you can't dictate businesses in your community, you can. You're always able to make the best decisions for your constituents. You can always ask if any business will add value to your community. Just because abortion is currently legal in Virginia doesn't mean abortion business is right for Russell County. And it's not discriminatory at all. Women are not being denied health care in southwest Virginia. I know because I have provided health care for a lot of Russell County residents. You're going to hear many untrue arguments alleging that abortion is a necessity. Hopefully, all of you board members have the discernment and the wisdom to hear these things, and then choose what's right for Russell County. Thank you.
This is not going to sound nice, but Eileen Penasevic. Would you please help me with that name when you get up to this place?
It's my husband's name. My name is Eileen Penasevic. I live in 21709 Old Dominion Road. That is in Washington County. We live in southwest Virginia, a part of the state that the rest of the state forgets about, and a part of the country that is often seen as a punchline to a joke. The last Wednesday, I was in Richmond for the Virginia March for Life, where more than a thousand people from across the state spoke out against our state's abortion laws. Something interesting happened while we were there. We heard people talking about southwest Virginia. We were being given credit for being the part of the state that was bucking the system, that southwest Virginia had found the way to say no thank you to the rest of the state and the laws that they're passing. Laws that refuse to limit abortion. Laws that don't care that a child feels pain as it's being torn limb from limb. Laws that don't represent who we are. We're at a crossroads in this country right now. One where our leaders disregard not only life in the womb, but the lives of everyday working Americans. They don't listen when we say we want less government in our lives. They don't listen when we say we want you out of our schools and away from our children. They don't listen when we say, "We're okay. We don't need your handouts." So I stand here today to tell you to listen to us. You are our local leaders. You are one of us. We have to start taking control of our country back. That starts with you. Listen to the people who vote for you, who work in your county, who support your economy. We're asking you to be bold, to stand up and say no. No, we will not allow babies to be murdered in our counties. No, we will not welcome people from out of state who think we are too ignorant and stupid to see that they wish to profit off of our location and give nothing back to our economies. Let us be the example to the rest of the state and tell them, "We don't want your laws." Down here in southwest Virginia, we know what we need, and we know how to take care of ourselves. Pass the ordinance that says no to allowing abortion businesses to open. I encourage you to live up to the reputation that I heard spoke of last Wednesday. One where we show the rest of the state how to tell our state leaders, "No. No, we won't blindly go along with what you dictate. No, we won't stand for the murder of innocent children. We may just be rural counties at the end of the state, but when we do this together, we become a large voice for the voiceless and a sanctuary for traditional values." If we start here with this small step, who knows what one day we may accomplish? But it's going to take each one of you saying yes, yes to life. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. I apologize again.
Oh, it's fine.
Next on the list is Dayton Owens.
I'm Dick Owens. I live at 10035 Old Mill Road, Lake Spring, Virginia, in Watson County. I'm writing a book that is called, "When a Nation Forgives God." It shows how the Third Reich convinced the German people to exterminate not only Jews, but physically and mentally handicapped individuals. Of course, we know all this, the slaughter, by the slaughter of these camps in different parts of Germany and different parts of Europe. We know that six million Jews were exterminated in these camps. We also know it wasn't just the Jews, as I said a minute ago, it's the mentally and physically handicapped. There was a church right outside on railroad tracks in Germany. They loaded up these, I read in this book and then another one about twenty-five years ago, there was a church located right beside the tracks. And they loaded these Jewish peoples, women, boys, and girls, in these cattle cars, crammed them in where they couldn't hardly even set out. As they started by the church, the church could hear the churning of the tracks. And then they could hear the screaming, or they could hear the screaming of the peoples and individuals on that tracks. So the church decided they were seeing a little outburst, so they could not hear it. They just ignored it and let it go by. Six million. When they got to those camps, they separated the men, the women, and the children. This was, it didn't matter your age, they killed you. And the German people, like our news media is doing to us today, convincing us that this child in the womb is not a child. You know that? You know that? Several years ago, they came, there was some letters, WWJD. We know what WDJD did, what did Jesus do, but this one was, what would Jesus do? Now that question is put in your lap. All you have to do is listen to Scripture. If you know Scripture any one of them, you know the value of human life. All of us are created in God's image, and we have worthy of life. Thank you for your time. Thank you for taking up this ordinance. I certainly hope you pass. Thank you.
Next I have Dr. Marus Peters.
Hello. My name is Marus Peters. I live on 19170 Pettit Place in Abingdon, Virginia. I work in Abingdon and Russell County here as a hospital executive. I'm a physician and also practicing a hospitalist. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. If we take the time to read some of today's news headlines, you may have encountered some of the following news. Fifteen-year-old boy steps thirteen-year-old cheerleader classmate 144 times in Florida, in New York. Thirty-nine-year-old career criminal charged with beating ninety-year-old hard-working store owner. A mother claims that teachers manipulated her child to change the gender identity. The mother said that two middle school teachers who ran the school's equality club, later known as UBU, stands for UBU, planted the seed that her daughter was bisexual in sixth grade and then introduced the idea she was transgender. Next, chilling 911 dispatch describes how over-medicated midwife mom cut her own wrists before jumping from top window of her home in suicide attempt after strangling her three children in the northeast. Next, second mega earthquake hits Turkey and Syria, scores feared dead. And last, Oregon becomes America's first death tourism destination, with one doctor, Dr. Death, offering terminally ill, out-of-state patients a fatal cocktail of drugs at his assisted suicide clinic. I firmly believe that this news is all stemming from one and only one root, despite the variety of wickedness it portrays, that is, when man reject God's decree, when man redefine truth and devise his own facade of a foundation to build his own version of the Tower of Badwill. Consequently, destruction, death, apathy, cruelty, murder, and, yes, earthquakes are the natural byproduct. What we are here to deliberate this evening is how to answer this fundamental question. What is true? What is the truth? What is moral law? And who is our moral law giver? I see only two critically different ways to answer this question. Either we continue to live and govern and to lead and work and raise our children as self-proclaimed gods of our own society and life, redefine truth to our own liking and convenience, making some editing and adjusting and modification dependent on the social or societal climate of the day. So much so that today, a twelve-year-old girl decides she's a boy and her parents need not intervene. In fact, they cannot intervene. A forty-year-old man decides to assault a hard-working elderly store owner because he feels vindicated by some headlines or pundits. Then he gets a joke of a punishment or a sentence. Seventeen-year-old girl decides the life that is growing in her uterus is not worth living and gets praised for independently murdering this innocent preborn baby. A family decide with their doctor that their eighty-year-old grandma's dementia is now too severe, too burdensome. So, I'll finish. So let's visit Asian Asia Clinic. Psalm 11 says, "If the foundations are destroyed, what can the righteous do?" We have an obligation to maintain sound foundation for your constituents, your community. Otherwise, there should be no surprise when chaos, crime, disregard to everything good becomes the state of the land. If you are building a house and the walls are not checked against a line, do not be shocked when destruction follows. Thank you and I apologize for being too much.
Dr. Andrew Brockmeyer.
My name's Andrew Brockmeyer. I live in Bristol, Virginia. My address is 17061 Hollis Lane. I am a family practitioner practicing in Bristol. I've been in practice there for twenty-six years. I have taken care of full gamut of patients, all ages. I've delivered hundreds of babies, and I'm here in support of this resolution. I'd like to start off by admitting that this is a highly emotional subject for many, many people. There's lots of rhetoric. It's difficult to understand what's true and what's not true, and as people have said, it all gets jumbled in the media. Before I go any further, I would like to thank that social worker for speaking. She has a miserable job, and we all need to pray for her, if you're a God-fearing person and for the work that she does. I'd like to clarify some of the confusion that's spread out there. So the pro-abortion forces claim that these are women's health clinics that they're opening up, that they want to have services provided for. So I might have looked at Planned Parenthood's website today and kind of see what services they actually offer. So here's a quick list. Number one, abortion services. Number two, abortion referrals. Next, birth control. Next, emergency contraception. Next, primary care. Next, HIV services. Transgender hormone therapy. Men's health services. Patient education. Pregnancy testing. STD testing, and women's services. So then I went and looked at the Russell County Health Department, a list of services that they provide. They provide family planning, including physical birth control, physical exams, birth control, condoms, HIV testing and counseling, medication assistance, it's available, STD testing and treatment, in quotes, "testing and treatment done for anyone strictly confidential." And then especially for women, they offer breast cancer and cervical cancer screening and pregnancy tests. So what you see, all these tests, other than the abortion stuff, everything is taken care of by the health department. That does not include what's available at every other, most other, medical offices or the health wagon or lots of other services that are available. So the argument that these are necessary women's health services that are provided by abortion mills and Planned Parenthood facilities really is a bunch of hogwash. Now, I like statistics. I'm not going to worry about the ton of statistics. These are pretty simple. Statistics can be easily manipulated, but these are pretty straightforward. The Agency for Healthcare Administration in Florida records the reason for every abortion that is performed in Florida. They've been collecting these statistics. If you get an abortion, you have to provide a reason why you're getting the abortion. And these statistics are fresh. It says, "Last month, the 2022 statistics, there were a total in Florida of seventy-four thousand eight hundred fifty-six abortions. Of that number, fifty-four thousand seven hundred sixty-nine were elective. Sixty thousand four hundred sixty-two were for social or economic reasons, which to me is elective also. Emotional, psychological health of the mother was a factor in seventeen hundred, and then the physical health of the mother, not life-threatening, was a factor over the cause of another thousand."
Dr. Brockmeyer.
Wow. My point is, less than 1% of all abortions were to rape, incest, or life-threatening goes to the mother.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Charles Humphrey.
Hello, my name is Charles Humphrey. I am a pastor in Washington County, a bivocational pastor. I live at 16017 Barnock Road in Mendoza, Virginia. Bivocational, because I also work right next door to this building here. And I'm here today for the same reason that I stood in front of the abortion mill when it was doing abortions in Bristol, Tennessee. One, out of an honor and love to God, because mankind bears his image and is created and conceived in the womb, and because these children bear his image, out of the honor and obedience to him, I'm here. But I'm also here because we are called to love our neighbor. And just as I was there to call out to my neighbor to have mercy on another neighbor, I'm here to call out to you to have mercy as my neighbor. to have mercy on any who would bring or any who would be brought here to be killed by having mercy on him, by not allowing this place to be a place that would legally allow children to be murdered in this county. I stood out in front of the abortion mill for five years and my goal was to do those things in obedience, but it was just to try to speak to people going in and to encourage them to consider letting other people help them take care of this child instead of murdering them. And it's an amazing thing that when you give access to abortion, you bring the worst out of people's hearts. Now, an abortion mill does not instill those things in people's hearts. Those things, those dark things are in their heart, but it brings it out of them. And it's obvious when you're killing a child that that is bringing out one of the most wicked things you could do, but it also has signs of that by what it brings to the lack of peace into a community. It's amazing, just my simple talking, like I'm talking to you, how people would react. I can't judge their hearts, but I can only see from their actions that there is dark things going on when you funnel those people into one particular place. They would throw things. They would say vile things. Sometimes I would have young children with me. There would be elderly women singing with me. And these people would yell at these children and elderly women and call them whores and say the most vile things you can imagine. One time, I asked a man if I could help him go another direction instead of killing his child. And we were going back and forth and he was telling me that he couldn't handle it. And I asked him just one simple question. I said, "Are you a Christian?" And he said, "That's it." And he walked to his car and I thought he was going to call the police because the police were called just about every week that I was there and I was there for every week for five years. And I thought he was going to pick up the phone, but instead I heard him chamber around in a forty-caliber handgun. The amazing thing that happened was that the woman that he was there with, that had his child inside of her, she stood in front of him and pulled his arms down from having that gun pulled me down.
Mr. Humphrey.
Five minutes. Wow, it is fast. Three. The amazing thing is, is that she asked mercy for me and then went in and killed her child. I do feel bad for the social worker that spoke a moment ago. I have a foster child in my home and I know what it's like when you're dealing with the stresses of a trauma that happens to these children. And I have to admit and confess to you.
Mr. Humphrey.
Can you just finish off this one second, please? That we, at times, have thought about sending the child back into the system. But people do not give up on these children. Do not give up on these children in these situations.
Thank you, Mr. Humphrey. Ayesha Yous. Uh-oh.
Ayesha Yous, our brand new greetings from Washington County. Our county is in the process of enacting restrictions on abortion clinics and we are proud to stand with our neighbors in Russell County. I'm a graduate of Duke Law School and I've been practicing law for the past twenty-three years. I want to address some common legal objections to local abortion regulations. First, constitutional issue. Supreme Court in Dobbs has completely changed the landscape. I'll quote from the opinion. "Purchasing an abortion is not a fundamental constitutional right." What this means is abortion restrictions will now be subject to rational basis review. That's the lowest level of scrutiny and no real obstacle. Also, there is no equal protection problem if some are urged. Supreme Court has never found a right to abortion on equal protection grounds and expressly declined to do so in numerous abortion opinions. If there is an equal protection claim to be made, it is actually that elective abortion should be constitutionally banned because unborn children are persons within the meaning of the due process and equal protection clause of the Fourteenth Amendment. There is no fundamental right to abortion under the Virginia Constitution. The next objection typically is the Dillon Rule. Dillon Rule has a fearsome reputation, but it's no real obstacle. The General Assembly has indeed expressly granted power to Russell County in clear and unequivocal terms. I can point to two specific grants of power. First is Virginia Code fifteen point two dash twelve hundred, which allows counties to regulate, secure, and promote the health, safety, and general welfare of its inhabitants. Second, Virginia Code fifteen two dash one one zero two, which provides power to secure and promote the general welfare and the safety, health, peace, good order, comfort, convenience, morals, trade, commerce, and industry of the inhabitants thereof. Two very broad grants of power and they have been interpreted by the Supreme Court of Virginia in a very expansive way. All kinds of activities, including abortion, are lawful here in the Commonwealth. Since the state legislature has not explicitly preempted the field of abortion regulation by enacting a comprehensive scheme of regulation, localities therefore have the power to regulate abortion within their jurisdiction to preserve and promote health, safety, and good order. As the Virginia Supreme Court stated in King versus Arlington County, "The mere fact that the state in the exercise of the police power has made certain regulations does not prohibit a municipality from exacting additional requirements." I can cite lots of Virginia Supreme Court cases approving local action to regulate for health, safety, and good order. But given my limited time, I'll just give you one from nearby Tazewell County. That's for a pass versus Town of Richland, interpreted the language in the Virginia Code to give localities the power to regulate to preserve peace and good order. Pursuant to that language, the Town of Richland's had the power to forbid the sale of intoxicating liquors within three hundred feet of a public school, even though the state had granted them a license to issue, to sell alcohol. The county ordinance you seek to pass has a presumption of validity unless it is unreasonable on its face. That's not the case with this ordinance. Under the Town of Narrows versus Clearview Cable TV, Virginia Supreme Court said, "Any litigant attacking it is unreasonable, has the burden to establish its unreasonableness." I can't say there's no legal risk here. There is. But this ordinance is a very strong legal position. Thank you.
Okay, I've looked at my list. Have I left anyone out that wants to speak?
Apologies, I didn't have a chance to sign up, so I was a little bit late. I'll be brief. I just wanted to thank you about Cody Jackson, Cleveland, Virginia area, the county. I just wanted to tell this board, you've kind of had us coming up and I guess voicing a lot of complaints and dissenting opinions in the past. I just wanted to take this chance to tell y'all how much that I appreciate that you're taking up this ordinance, that I appreciate that you're being willing to stand and really stand for the people and will their voice. There's not really any reason for me to stand up and to try to argue the morality of abortion, especially in our county, because thanks to you guys, we've already made that a clear statement to the rest of our state that Russell County is unequivocally pro-life. And I think we're going to back that up tonight. What I wanted to just say really quick was just that I appreciate you. And to call out one thing, it was requested or asked if we would stand with you if we chose to go down this route, I think by Chairwoman Wallace. And I just want to tell you absolutely, we're here tonight and we will be with you after tonight and for everything that comes maybe after this, tonight, we will continue to be here. That was our plan from the get-go because when you do what's right for our county, we will absolutely stand behind you. I appreciate you for taking this up and I urge you to pass it. Thank you.
Nathan Kaiser, Green Valley. I'm in Steve District. I'm the chairman of the Russell County Republican Party and candidate for a Republican nomination for supervisor at large. But I also wanted to start out by saying thank you to Katie Patton, the county attorney, for working hard on this ordinance. And I want to thank the board, all you members for considering this and I encourage you to pass this. In 2019, myself and Andrew Hensley went to a meeting with a group of a Christian organization in the county with the idea of making Russell County a pro-life county. We've just seen the Pro, Second Amendment or movement and ordinances passed. And we thought, hey, what's a better time than now? Let's push to protect life from conception. And we were told by a pastor that's sitting in this room tonight, "You can't do that. You can't do that." Well, tonight, we can do that. Tonight, I want to see that happen. I would love to see that happen. Russell County has led the way in so many fronts and has been a voice for all of Southwest Virginia. People like myself and Tony Baker and others that have stood up here and in Richmond, I want to thank you. But tonight, we can make a shit of that difference. We stood up for Second Amendment. We stood up against CRT. We stood up against transgender model policies. We stood up against ordinance, that ordinances that would restrict our local citizens even more so than they are. And now, we have the opportunity to protect life. And it will, this ordinance will not only protect the life of children, but it'll also protect our county as a whole, all our citizens. If abortion clinic comes to Russell County, it will put a burden on Russell County that it does not need. So, I encourage you all to pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Close the public hearing. Anyone else?
My name's Lynn Hissom, Short Creek, Dayton, D. District. Want to let the board know that I was approached by a state senator just before they ran back into session this year. And I want you to know that Richmond is watching Russell County tonight. The governor is very concerned about his stance that he took on the fifteen weeks that they can still have an abortion. Russell County has let him know and Southwest Virginia has let him know that we did not like that stance, that we felt betrayed. I told this senator to please carry it back to Richmond with him and let the governor know that we felt betrayed. Did you know that in our election, that the margin of vote that we had out this time gave him the election and won him this election? That's why he's so concerned. Russell County is a leader. It's not a follower. We are a godly people and we are conservative people. And this is a good thing for our county. And I appreciate the work that all of you have just done on this. And I ask you tremendously, from the bottom of my heart, please pass this and make our county a non-abortion county so we can live a godly way as we need to without all the interference from all the other states that will come rolling in. If you don't believe it, just go down to the Subox and Clintus and take a look at all the different state tags that rolls into them. Thank you.
Let us call. All hearts are clear. At this time, I'll close this public hearing. I'll turn this paper back over to county administrator for our record, that will go with record. Okay, at this time, we have a presentation. And that is Ms. Cam Smith with the Heart of Appalachia Tourism Authority.
Hello, and thank you all for having me here tonight. I have left a folder for each of you on your tables. I'm just here to give you a short presentation on what Heart of Appalachia has been doing. For starters, on the left side of your folder, in 2021, we hired a third-party organization out of Tennessee to do an economic impact study on the, basically, the impact of traveler spending within the Heart of Appalachia region, which is the seventh westernmost counties of the state. And in Russell County alone, the 2021 tourism impact was thirty-one point four million dollars. In the southern county region, which includes all the way from Tazewell County to Lee County and the city of Norton, the impact was two hundred and fifty-three point three million dollars. And this is direct, indirect, and induced spending from visitors to our region. As far as Heart of Appalachia, I am serving as the executive director of the organization. And we spent 2022 doing a lot of good things. We distributed nearly eighty thousand pieces of print material. That's our visitor guide, our Appalachian Backroads map, which markets to the motorcycle riders and the sports car enthusiasts, really marketing the roads that we already have here in the region. And we packaged those up in a way that gardeners request through our website for those maps. And just this weekend alone, we had a hundred and forty requests for maps with over twenty of those being for groups. They were requesting, you know, ten maps or twenty maps for their car clubs and for their motorcycle groups. So, we're really excited about that. The Appalachian Backroads website, the traffic increased by twenty-one percent last year over 2021. And as we all know, with COVID, there was a lot of people getting out into the outdoors in 2020 and 2021 who maybe hadn't done so before. So, 2021 was a really good year for us, with 2022 being even better. We've partnered with a lot of regional news outlets to feature different trip itineraries and to market the region. Our Appalachian Backroads Facebook page saw a two hundred and thirty percent increase in reach last year over 2021. So, we're doing a lot of good things in the region. Russell County has always been a good supporter and we hope that you all will continue to do so. And we have, on the other sheet of your paper here, it's just all the partners you worked with, which is Oliver Counties, the Tobacco Commission, Virginia Tourism Corporation, the Cricket Road, to market our music venues. And you have several QR codes here that if you scan those, they will take you to our different websites. And of course, you have my contact information at the bottom. And on the left, you have a business card. And I hope you will share this with some of your tourism-related businesses because it gives them the opportunity to place their business onto our website. So, I thank you again for allowing me to be here to give the presentation tonight. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you so much. Any questions?
Thank you.
Appreciate it. At this time, we're going to move on into our organizational meeting, which is the election of the chair and the vice chair. Mr. Lester, I'll turn that over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first rule of order is I want to open the floor for the nominations of the Russell County Board of Supervisors Chairman.
Steve Brady.
Thank you, Mr. E.
I'd like to nominate Luanne Wallace, please.
Thank you, Ms. Doc. Any other nominations? If there's no more nominations, I'd like to have a motion that the chair nominations be closed. I need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Since all nominations are closed, we'll proceed with the vote in reverse order and show of hands. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm rushing. Sorry about that.
I'm about to hear down in this chamber what's going on to make the motion depart.
Okay.
Close.
I need a motion that the chairmanship be closed. Nominations be closed.
I make the motion to close nominations.
Yes. I need a second.
I'll say it.
Thank you. I'll then, I'll say aye.
Aye aye.
Sorry about that. Since all nominations are closed, we'll proceed with the vote in reverse order and show of hands. Luanne Wallace.
That's not reverse order, but I'm calling. That's wrong.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, that's wrong. Okay.
Luanne Wallace. Now, Steve Brady. Congratulations, Ms. Wallace, you've been elected as the Russell County Board of Supervisors Chairman. And I would turn the chair back over to you.
Thank you. I apologize for that. It was snafu.
It is difficult to hear down here.
We don't hear well down here, but okay. Thank you. At this time, I will ask for the nominations for the election of our vice chair.
I'd like to nominate David Eaton.
We have a nomination from Mr. Ray for Mr. David Eaton.
I'd like to nominate Ours Christian.
We have a nomination for Mr. Ours Christian for vice chair.
Will nominations be closed?
I have a motion to close nominations at this time from Mr. Brady. I need a second.
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 I have a second. I need a vote to close nominations. All in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries to close. We'll take it in reverse order. At this time, Horace Christian. All in favor for Horace Christian to be vice chair? I don't know. I can't see. How many do we have?
Four.
We have four. All right, David Eaton for vice chair. We have three. Horace, congratulations. You're vice chair. Moving on to new business. I need approval of the minutes, please.
Can the chair make a motion? We approve the minutes of January 3, 2023.
Are we going to take them together? May we take them both minutes at the same time or separately, because they were...
You can take them together. They can be motioned for both minutes.
Well, not as Steve points out, or Mr. Brady, I apologize, points out. Not everyone was present at both meetings.
Okay, well, it's probably best if some people want to abstain, it's better to take them separately.
Okay, thank you very much. Unapproved minutes of January 3. I have a motion from Mr. Brady. I need a second. All in favor to approve the unapproved minutes of January 3?
Oh, well, it just don't end up as I said.
Okay, we have an extension by Ms. D. Unapproved minutes of January 18. At that time, we were in Richmond. I need a motion to approve those. I have a motion. I'll accept it from Mr. Eaton, and I'll accept your second, Horace. All in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? I have two extensions, correct? All right. Moving along to approval of expenditures. I need a motion.
Can the chair make a motion to approve the expenditures?
Okay, I have a motion from Mr. Brady to approve the expenditures as presented. I need a second.
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Lundlins. All... Any discussion? Okay, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? At this time, I'm going to ask the audience, if you could please stop your whispering, if we can't hear up here. So thank you for being attentive tonight. Next, we have a committee of appointments by the board's consideration, and we have Swords Creek Community Center.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair, can I do this with the slate?
You can make a motion for that.
I want to make a motion on one of the lists to...
Okay, for a two-year term for your Swords Creek Community Center.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Mr. Eaton has a motion on the floor. I need a second.
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion? Here are none. I need a motion. All in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? Congratulations, Swords Creek Community Center. We now have a field... We have to fill a board seat for Cumberland Plate Home Waste Management Authority. That is Mr. Ray, and I will accept a motion for his reappointment.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Mr. Ray.
I'll second that.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. At this time, we did not take that off our list on our agenda.
Yes, Madam Chair, I asked that that be removed from the agenda. Spearhead Trail, the existing board member is there until August. It's on the list. Spearhead, the new director requested, but they have a filled position until August. So we'll redress that in August.
Okay, is that something that we need to address with this board or by consensus? Are we all okay with that, because we didn't officially... Did we officially move that at the beginning? I didn't mark it off.
No, ma'am, we did not.
Okay, so, Ms. Patton, we didn't mark that off, but can we take that off now?
Table it.
Yes, you can table it. From August or...
Okay, so that's what we'll do. I don't need a motion to do that, do we? I need a motion to table?
I'll make a motion to table.
Thank you. We'll do it that way. All right, we have a motion to table. Any discussion for... All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Yes, you had it up here. Sorry. It's difficult. I'm trying to watch for hands to go up or whatever. Anyway, we have... Now, we're coming to a citizens' comment period. I think we've all spoke our hearts tonight, so... I asked you all before, was all hearts clear? So we're clear on that one. We're moving on. Do I have any constitutional officers for any reports or requests? Seeing none, I'm moving on. Now, we're at the county attorney reports and requests. Ms. Patton, it's all yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first item under my reports and requests is the resolution ordinance prohibiting the location and operation of abortion clinics within the boundaries of Russell County. The board directed me to look at drafting an ordinance that would prohibit abortion clinics from locating in the county. I have thoroughly researched the issue, and I have presented the board with an ordinance for your consideration. The abortion ordinance is very simple and straightforward. The legal authority is a summary in the board's resolution. Obviously, it's not practical for me to include every piece of legal authority or support in a resolution, but just to give you the idea, and this list, what's contained in the resolution is not exhaustive. It's well settled law that pursuant to the police power, the county has the authority to regulate public health, morals, and welfare of the citizens of Russell County. In considering the possible location of an abortion clinic in Russell County due to the events that have transpired since the Supreme Court's landmark decision in Dobbs, there were many things to be considered, you know, potential implications and consequences to Russell County should an abortion clinic decide to locate here. One of the valid concerns is the increased potential crime that could result from abortion clinics locating in the county. It's not... It's pretty... It's common knowledge that there are increased crime rates that result from this. I have cited some abortion clinics, the National Abortion Federation, statistics related to crime involving abortion clinics over the year. But notably, I did want to provide the board with some information that I was able to find. In 2018, I think, the assaults that stated, and I'm trying to pull it up, I apologize, the assaults were 15 at abortion clinics. In 2021, it rose to 100, over 100. I mean, the statistics that they have, look them up, has increased in the past few years. And that's before Dobbs. That was before the decision in Dobbs ever came down. We don't have that information yet, but just the drastic increase. And that's something that this board has to be concerned with. That's something that you work closely with the chair's office in providing health and welfare to the county. The authority and decision to institute or raise taxes is clearly in the province of this board. And this county would be stretched to combat the increase of crime generated by abortion clinics and still provide all the necessary services throughout the county. The only solution would be to raise taxes, which this board has previously expressed extreme opposition to. I do want to be clear that this ordinance does not prohibit abortion, does not regulate abortion, does not criminalize it outside of this county. What this ordinance does within your police power is prohibits abortion clinics from locating and operating here. That is a power that you have. It's my legal opinion, and that can change based on things that happen, that the Board of Supervisors would not have the ability to ban abortion totally. You just have the power to regulate businesses and things that affect how the counties run. And I do believe that this ordinance that prohibits abortion clinics from locating here, it is in compliance with Dillon's Rule and the general police power. I want to quote just a little bit extra outside of what I put in my resolution, but a Virginia Supreme Court case states that "When the subject lies within the police power of the state, a debatable question of its reasonableness is for the legislature." "We have no power nor authority to substitute, in our judgment, an alternative method when a method adopted by the legislature." And in that case, that means you, the governing body. And so that's very important. When you act pursuant to the police power, you're making decisions what's best for Russell County. And you are given that authority clearly in 15.2-1200. I present this ordinance to the board for your consideration. I did make one change that I do want to just read aloud to you. I presented it to everyone, but... I did update the definition of abortion clinic when I spoke with other attorneys working on this matter to make sure that it is the best definition. And the language I put in there changed the definition that I had and states that "Abortion clinic means a facility other than a hospital where any person administers to or causes to be taken by a woman a drug, any drug, medicine, or any other substance other than contraceptive methods that are approved by the U.S. Food and Drug Administration, or use of any instrument, device, or means with the intent to knowingly destroy the life of an embryo or fetus in his or her mother's womb." The purpose of doing that is to ensure that you weren't violating anything that was federally protected. And so that was an important thing in crafting this ordinance. I know you'll give me just a little bit of, I do think it's, before you adopt this, it should be read into the record, and then I'll present it to you for your consideration. Resolution and ordinance prohibiting the location and operation of abortion clinics within the boundaries of Russell County. "Whereas the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Commonwealth shall be supreme, any ordinance, resolution, bylaw, regulation, rule, regulation, or order of any governing body or any corporation, board, or number of persons shall not be inconsistent with the Constitution and laws of the United States or of the Commonwealth. And whereas the power of the state under its police power to provide for the health of its people has never been questioned, but on the contrary, has been stressed as one of the powers which may be given the broadest application. And it is common knowledge that this power has been increasingly exercised in keeping with advances made in the sciences of medicine and sanitation in recent years. In these circumstances, courts are reluctant to place limits on what may be done in the interest of the health of a community so long as unreasonable methods are not employed, nor the natural and constitutional rights of citizens invaded. And whereas the citizen owns his property absolutely, it is true it cannot be taken from him for any private use whatsoever without his consent, nor any public use without compensation. Still, he owns it subject to the restriction, namely that it must be so used as not to injure others, and that the sovereign authority may be by police regulations so direct the use of it that it shall not prove pernicious to his neighbors or the citizens generally. And whereas it is well settled that the state under its police power has the right to regulate any business, occupation, trade, or calling in order to protect the public health, morals, and welfare subject to the restriction of reasonable classification. This power to regulate includes the power to license, and it is settled general rule that to protect the health, morals, and welfare of the public, estate, license, and occupation, trade, or calling, where the business or vocation is one of a non-useful nature or one likely to develop into a nuisance, the state may, in the exercise of its police authority, license or absolutely prohibited as regard for the welfare of the community may seem to justify. And whereas the Virginia General Assembly has conferred upon localities the same general police power, more specifically, any county may adopt such measures as it deems expedient to secure and promote the health, safety, and general welfare of its inhabitants which are not inconsistent with the general laws of the Commonwealth. And whereas neither the United States Constitution nor any federal statute or regulation provide a right to abortion services, and whereas the Virginia General Assembly has not passed any statute nor does the Constitution of Virginia provide the Commonwealth of Virginia exclusive authority to regulate abortion services, nor does existing Virginia law occupy the field regarding the regulation of abortion clinics. And whereas two former attorney generals for the Commonwealth of Virginia issued official opinion stating that localities do possess the power to regulate abortion clinics subject to general statutory law and constitutional jurisprudence. Whereas the National Abortion Federation provides statistics regarding the number of criminal acts conducted at abortion clinics from 1977 to 2009, whereas crimes detailed in the aforementioned statistics include murder, attempted murder, bombing, arson, attempted bomb arson, invasion, vandalism, trespassing, butre attacks, anthrax threats, assault and battery, death threats, kidnapping, burglary, stalking, et cetera. Whereas the numbers included in the statistics only reflect incidents reported to the National Abortion Federation, and actual incidents are much likely higher. Whereas Russell County is a rural county with a population of 25,550 people as of the 2021 census. Additionally, a significant portion of Russell County is agricultural and thus eligible for the county's land use ordinance, thereby reducing the county's overall tax revenue. Whereas due to the budgetary constraints, the Board of Supervisors of Russell County, Virginia, do not believe that the current funding for the Russell County Sheriff's Office would be sufficient to provide the requisite amount of law enforcement personnel to address the increased crime associated with facilities that provide abortion services. And whereas the only way to provide the Russell County Sheriff's Office with additional funding for increased law enforcement personnel would be to raise real estate and personal property taxes upon its citizens. And whereas the Board of Supervisors of Russell County, Virginia, find that it is not in the best interest of the citizens of Russell County to pay additional taxes to allow for the facilities that provide abortion services. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Russell County, Virginia, properly advertised the proposed adoption of the following ordinance in accordance with applicable Virginia law, and now therefore be resolved, the Board of Supervisors of Russell County, Virginia, declare that due to the likelihood that any facility that provides abortion services in Russell County would become a nuisance and increase overall crime within Russell County that under its general police power conferred by Virginia Code annotated 15.2-1200, and in the interest of the welfare of the citizens, that by duly adopted ordinance shall prohibit facilities that provide abortion services within the boundaries of Russell County, Virginia. Be it further resolved that the following language is hereby enacted as ordinance, and Lonzo will have to fill in the number, and hereby incorporates the language contained in this resolution herein. The ordinance states, "Due to a likelihood that the location of an abortion clinic defined herein would create a public nuisance in Russell County and place an undue burden on the taxpayers of Russell County, abortion clinics are prohibited from locating or operating within the boundaries of Russell County." Abortion clinic is defined... "Abortion clinic means a facility other than a hospital where any person administers to or causes to be taken by a woman any drug, medicine, or other substance other than contraceptive methods that are approved by the U.S. Food and Drug Administration, or use any instrument, device, or means with the intent to knowingly destroy the life of an embryo or fetus in his or her mother's womb." "Violations of this ordinance shall be a class-one misdemeanor and include a fine not to exceed $1,000 per violation. Each day of operation in violation of this ordinance shall constitute a separate and distinct violation of this ordinance. Any and all costs incurred by the county in the enforcement of this ordinance shall constitute a lien against the property upon which such nuisance existed, which lien shall be filed, proven, and collected as provided for by law. Such lien shall be noticed to all persons from the time of its recording and shall bear interest at the legal rate thereafter until satisfied. In addition, an administrative fee of $150 or 25% of the cost, whichever is less. However, in no event shall the fee be less than $25. That should any section or provision of this ordinance be decided to be invalid or unconstitutional by a word competent jurisdiction, such decision shall not affect the validity or constitutionality of any other section or provision of this ordinance." I present it to the board for your consideration.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to amend the county attorney on draft this resolution. And I'd like to call up and have to make the motion to approve this resolution and ordinance, and it be immediately signed by our chair.
I'll say it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to adopt this past read ordinance tonight, on this date. I'll call for the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, I got one thing. I also asked county administrator for a copy of this resolution by our neighboring counties for review. I don't want it in Russell County, but I don't want it in our other neighboring counties. I don't want it in Russell County, but I don't want it in our other neighboring counties either. So I'm hoping that y'all reach out to Paseo, Buchanan, Dickinson County and have a conversation with them on this.
Thank you, Mr. Eaton. Will do. Moving on, Ms. Patton, you're still on the floor. American Electric Power Resolution.
Yes, Madam Chair. I was directed to draft a resolution opposing the AEP rate increase. This is a resolution that could be sent up to the state government to show that, and I'll read it as well, the board can decide if they want to pass this. Really, and again, resolutions are just statements of support. There's no, I have no legal concerns about adopting this resolution. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Russell County, Virginia, is committed to being responsive and attentive to the concerns and welfare of all of its citizens. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Russell County, Virginia, has recently become aware of the financial hardship that the most recent American Electric Power and referred to as AEP rate increases have had on its citizens. And whereas the Board of Supervisors of Russell County, Virginia, believes that the most recent rate increase is unreasonable and is having a detrimental effect on all of our citizens, especially our most vulnerable elderly population. Whereas AEP has consistently posted strong quarterly earnings, and specifically into 2022, with strong earnings leading the Board of Supervisors of Russell County, Virginia, to believe that the rate increases were and are unnecessary. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Russell County, Virginia, that the board hereby formally request that the Virginia State Corporation Commission and the General Assembly and the Governor's Office take some formal action to reconsider the recent rate increases. Be it further resolved that the chairperson of the Board of Supervisors of Russell County, Virginia, Luke Wallace, is hereby authorized to sign this resolution, and the clerk of the Board of Supervisors of Russell County, Virginia, Lonzo Lester, is hereby authorized to attach the chairperson's signature to this resolution.
I'll make a motion to adopt. Second.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt this resolution on behalf of citizens that are getting American Electric Power. So I'm going to ask for a little discussion on this one. I support saving dollars, but I don't get my electricity from American Electric Power. So what does that do for our part of the county? Does that make a difference? We got Old Dominion.
You got Kentucky Utilities.
I have, I do. I call it Old Dominion, but Kentucky Utilities, yes, I do. And my district is served. Part of my district is American Electric Power, but my district as a whole is served by Kentucky Utilities.
Do you want to do it as a Dominion and AEP? That way we have the whole county covered. That way the legislators know that both Dominion and AEP.
I don't mind doing that. The reason I brought this up is I took a whole folder to Richmond with me, perfectly. And, you know, people are having to choose between medicine and food. And with everything else they're going through, you know, this is just unacceptable to me. And if Ms. Wallace wants to add that, I'm fine with that.
Well, thank you. I'm just asking that question because we're leaning out of the demographic.
I apologize about that, called everything. All my decisions were bad with AEP, so I apologize.
I'm lost, Robby P., and we need to help.
I would be happy to add that, and I apologize. I just, I took direction and made a resolution. Would the language be similar? Has there also been a rate increase there?
I will amend my motion to include.
I don't want to cause any problems, and I do support this, and I will vote for that. But I do want the folks in my district that are largely on Kentucky Utilities.
So add Kentucky Utilities.
I'll amend my motion to include them, but I apologize. I just wanted to add that.
It's not Dominion now. We don't get our power from Dominion yet.
It's Kentucky Utilities.
I just want to make sure I have their legal name, their state corporation.
And if we can fix that here tonight, you can fix it on paper.
I can't, I can't. Yes, sir.
I amended the motion to add that.
I'll say.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second amended.
Madam Chair, I think I'll soak them in water. If you get four miles in water, it's like a house. And if they go in there, it's like a house. It's really Kentucky Utility.
Yeah, it is Kentucky Utility. Okay, so I have a motion and a second. All in favor to amend the resolution? Any opposed? Any extensions? Thank you. Motion carries. Next, we're moving over to the county administrator reports and requests. Mr. Lester, I'll hand that over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As Mr. Eaton said, first thing upon the county administrator reports is the 2023 Baco and the Virginia Rural Center Rural Caucus reception and meetings. And the Board of Supervisors, like intended in January, the 2023 legislative program through the Virginia Association of Counties. One of the many topics that they had to deal with during this time, which is, it's vast, it's long, it's hard-paced, it's day and night. So they addressed economic development planning, education, energy that was just mentioned here, like Mr. Eaton and Ms. Wallace mentioned, environmental and agriculture that is part of our county. Of course, finance, I mean, that's just part of it. The general government, which is the laws and the regulations they had to deal with. Also, health and human services, which is another large component of the county. And of course, the last one, I'll give the dog, Vod, three in here, transportation. So we did visit all these agencies. We had harsh, hard discussions with them on what was going on in Russell County, what they were looking at, what they were seeing coming up in the future. And of course, you know, we always advocate every year, some we get, some we don't, but that doesn't mean we stop trying, so. The second thing on my reports is the DCR Clinch River State Park Master Plan Meeting, which is on February the 15th, 2023, through the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation. They are developing a master plan for the Clinch River, which involves, of course, the new state park that's down there. So again, it's on February the 15th, 2023. Next on the county administrator reports is the Covenant Plateau Regional Housing Authority. This is another part of this development within the county. This is a environmental review section category on excluded projects on housing that are building within the county. And that's in the Board of Supervisors' reports of all the projects. And of course, again, next on the county administrator reports is the VDOT Monthly Report. As you can see, they have addressed the maintenance activities, the activities that are planned, and the rural rustic and the six-year projects that for y'all's review. Next on the county administrator request is a VDOT request, a notice on 19 and 58. I'd like to bring this one up on the map. They are asking for property abandonment request on this request. And this request is, of course, I apologize. And it is there. And here. I'll bring it up there to the picture of the VDOT side. Okay. This is a request by the Virginia Department of Transportation pursuant to subsection 33.2902. VOD is asking, "Would have considered abandonment of this portion of Old Route 19 and Old Route 58 in Hensfield area." This section is being considered upon request by the adjoining property owner for the purposes of surplus right-of-way conveyances. They will be considering this and advertising for this, and they will propose the notice of the abandonment and post it into February the 1st, 2023, and also that we post it again on February the 8th in the Lebanon News. Now, anyone that has objection to this or any comments on this is welcome to attend this meeting that will be held before the next board meeting, which is on March the 6th. So this is the proposed track. And it is in the VDOT right-of-way for abandonment, not discontinuance, but abandonment.
So Mr. Lester, do you need a motion for the notice to go out?
I need a motion. I need it, that's what's going. Yes, ma'am. I need a motion for the Board of Supervisors to proceed with the public hearing for the abandonment of the Route 1958 proposed property.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I have a motion. I need a second.
Second.
Any more discussion? Further discussion? Okay, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next on the county administrator request is the, from the Department of Forestry. This is from the Forest Sustainability Fund. This is a grant for $5,240.27, and this is to assist localities that provide lower forest land taxes to landowners by restoring the portion for gun revenues to locality in the state of Virginia. So this is a way of the Department of Forestry sustaining back to us $5,240.27. I need a motion for the appropriation and allocation of $5,240.27.
Some move.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next is from the Department of Criminal Justice Services. This is another grant. This is for $62,009. And this is the 2223 Vstop Formula Grant for the Department of Criminal Justices for the Vstop Program. I need a motion for appropriation and allocation of $62,009 for this program.
Some move.
I have a motion. I got a second from Mr. Breeding, right? Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next on the county administrator request is from the Virginia Federation of Humane Societies Direct Animal Award 2023, Memory of Understanding. This is a grant from the Virginia Federation of Humane Societies to the Russell County Animal Shelter for a grant and award of $10,000 to be used for the direct care of our animals in bedding, food, medicine, supplies, and improvements to the animal kennels and exercise areas. This award is only given to some of the top credential animal shelters in the state. This is an award to us based off of our performance within the animal shelter based off the last year's. This is a grant for $10,000 to be utilized by the Board of Supervisors and the animal shelter for these services. And the reason, and I'd also like to expand on that at the permission of the chair, that I know there's been a lot of Facebook pages about our animal shelter. I know that there was a public notice that went out surrounding the circumstances of these. I'd like to convey to the board the current standing, the update of what the conditions are, that we have, the owner has now, which they had legal right to surrender all but four dogs. We have taken the animals in. We are working with our transfer partners. We have 36 in the kennels right now, and they're in the process of moving those out too. So we've got the dogs back in our care. We're moving them out to our partners, and they're being adopted. So, and the people kept four small dogs, and that was the mother of the one that was arrested. So that's about all I can say on it, open public. So again, the dogs have been taken care of. This is a grant for the award. I need a motion for appropriation for $10,000 for them from the Virginia Federation of Humane Societies Animal Award.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I don't know where the second came from. Okay. Mr. Ray? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next is the one that was added. I have a travel request by the Russell County Courts for the clerks of educational and training in Roanoke, Virginia. I need approval for the travel request.
Some move.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Eaton for the travel request. I need a second. I've got two seconds. I'll take either one of those. This corner. Steve's giving hints of Mr. Christian. All right, all in favor?
It's hard to hear. Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes the county administrator reports and requests. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. So here we are at the end of our meeting, and I'm going to briefly ask for more discussion. I'll start with Ms. Da. Thank you. Mr. Eaton?
Just something I'd like for the board to take upon consideration at next month's meeting, which I want to thank Aaron Pastor, Aaron Feizer, for having this opportunity of. But we have a building there in Honeaker, the old Southern State's building, that Aaron approached me in regards to seeing if there was an opportunity to help the people of Russell County. And we met with Red Cross and the Salvation Army and Emergency Management Coordinator Jess Powers at the location and looked at the facility. And the Red Cross has notified us by email that they have accepted that this building can be utilized. And what this would be would be for housing. Usually when we have someone in the county that gets burned out, they lose their home and everything. This building could be utilized for housing. It's got a full kitchen to be able to feed these people. And so Red Cross has certified it, and the Salvation Army has certified it. I know we put a lot of people up in motels. I know that's a huge expense and burden. But if we have people in need, and we are having circumstances before we have homeless people. And this would honestly be a great opportunity to be able to house some of those people and to get them out of the cold and some of that thing. So I just wanted to make the board aware of this, that this would be a great opportunity for Russell County because some of the people that we've had transport out that didn't have housing, we had to send them to Morton. And then some of the people that lose everything they have, we've had them up in motels. So I think this would be a great savings in regards to this type of ministry and this type of opportunity that we see in this area.
Mr. Eaton, is that building in the town of Honeaker?
Yes, it is, ma'am.
Okay, I would gladly offer you a letter of support from the county that we encourage the town of Honeaker to see what they can do with it to make it what you want it to be. Mr. Breeding? Okay. Mr. Christian?
I'd like to say that, I'd like the public who's still here, that all of us board members are anticipating on blood and re-land. I know some say that we have done a good job. We feel we've done a good job as one of the front of people for another four years.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. Okay, Mr. Ray?
No, Madam Chair.
Mr. Lovelace? And as the chair tonight, I want to thank everyone that came, participated, and listened. I'm a little disappointed when everybody got up and left and they didn't hear that we was trying to save them a little bit on their electric bill and everything else. But it is what it is. So thank you for participating tonight, and at this time, I will adjourn this meeting. The meeting is March 6th. I'll see y'all then, back in the room.